Welcome to the February 3rd, 2011 Fiscal Year 2012 Proposed Operating Budget Public Hearing of the Prince George's County Board of Education. Ms. Jackson, call the roll, please.
Mr. Armwood?
Present.
Ms. Boston?
Present.
Mr. Barrows?
Present.
Ms. Eubanks?
Present.
Ms. Higgins?
Present.
Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Waller?
Present.
Mr. Harris?
Present.
Ms. Speck?
Present.
Ms. Jacobs?
Here.
Thank you.
The Board of Education has convened this evening for the sole purpose of receiving your comment from the public with regard to Dr. Height's proposed 2012 operating budget. Building on significant academic progress, the Board of Education reconciled and approved a $1.63 billion FY 2011 budget in June of 2010. The funding needed had to maintain successful programs, fund needed personnel, and to provide resources necessary to prepare students to ultimately be college and career ready. This year's budget proposes increased challenges due to the following. On January 20th of 2011, the Governor of Maryland released his proposed budget which reduced this district's revenue by $20.8 million from the current year's appropriation. In addition, the district will lose over $100 million in federal stimulus funds which expires in June 2011. It is important to note that with the economic downturn striking every possible organization, corporation, business, no one is exempt from the tightening effects of the recession and unfortunately Prince George's County Public Schools has not escaped those grass either. We ask that our community work together with us to advocate for additional dollars and in the event that we are not successful in garnering additional support, that we work together to protect classrooms and our children. The Board of Education will hold two additional public hearings. One will be a public work session during the month of February as it deliberates on the FY 2012 operating budget which has been recommended by Superintendent Height. Upcoming Board of Education FY 2012 operating budget public hearings will be held as follows. February 8th and 10th here at the Sasser Administration Building, both meetings at 7:00 PM. Speakers registered to speak will be limited to three minutes. And the Board of Education work session will be held on February 8th here at the Sasser Administration Building. That will begin at 5:30. We encourage you to come to that prior to public comment. The Board of Education is scheduled to adopt this budget on February 24th, 2011, based on any amendments that happen between the public hearings and the final adoption date. The recommended budget will then be forwarded to our county executive, Mr. Resheren Baker. He will develop a proposed budget that includes the Board of Education budget and he has to propose that budget to the county council by March 15th. We tell you that information because we also want you to engage in the public comment that the county council will have with regard to this budget. We will post those dates on the website and keep you informed of those dates as well. The county council must adopt a budget which includes the school system, funding, and is designated, they must do that by January 1st. We will have an opportunity to reconcile the budget and adopt the reconciled budget by June 30th, 2011. Again, our scheduled date to do that is June 23rd, the deadline date is June 30th, but again, we give you these dates because they are very critical as we go through the process. Dr. Height, if you want to give a brief overview, you may, otherwise we will go directly into public comments so that we can hear from our constituents.
I think we should move directly into public comment.
Thank you. Okay. We have, let's see, two other speakers. We have 21 registered speakers. You've been registered to speak in public comment forum where the Board of Education will listen to your comments. The purpose of this forum is to listen to you, hear your comments. So the Board will not address your comments necessarily unless there's something that we believe Dr. Height should clarify with regard to interpretation of something that's been said. You may not relinquish any part of your time to another registered or unregistered speaker. You may not address individuals or issues. If there are specific personal issues that you have to deal with with your children, we will ask Dr. Height to direct staff to address that with you individually. If you continue your comments, we ask you to finish the sentence once the sentence that you're on, once the buzzer goes off. Please leave a copy of your statement with Ms. McCauley. Raise your hand. Lynn. Please leave a copy of your comments if you did bring some so that the Board may also read them. Our first speaker is DeArthur Ames, an 11th grade student at Northwestern Evening High Shawn Henson, 12th grade student at Northwestern Evening High School.
Good evening, Mr. Superintendent and members of the Board of Education. My name is Robin Bodewan and I have been teaching in Prince George's County for over 20 years. After 18 years of reading recovery in Prince George's County, the impact and positive outcomes cannot be disputed. In these grave financial times, we must stand together and not only consider the effectiveness of reading recovery, but we must consider the cost effectiveness as well. Policymakers are responsible to be selective about how money is spent on educational programs. However, they cannot afford to be short-sighted when making these critical decisions. The question we need to ponder is the bigger question. How does reading recovery actually provide the school system with a huge savings each year? There is a critical window of time in which children learn to read. Thus, the reading recovery targets first graders. For many students, the task of learning to read in a larger classroom setting is beyond their reach. Although attempts have been made to provide remedial group help to struggling readers, studies show that none has been as effective as reading recovery. Oftentimes, students who have not had the benefit of reading recovery sit year after year in a remedial group or in a special education class, never catching up and never getting to grade level. The cost of servicing one child in reading recovery is significantly lower than servicing one child in special education per year. The cost would be a one-time cost of $4,670 per child in reading recovery versus $60,000 per child over a 10-year period in special education. In addition, reading recovery greatly reduces retention rates. When analyzing the cost of a child repeating a school year, it is considerably more than the cost of reading recovery. Retention has not proven to be a successful alternative and oftentimes does not even help a child learn to read. In summary, reading recovery is a short-term intervention with proven results. Currently, the positive outcome of reading recovery in our county is that 1,000 students each year who began their reading below grade level finished first grade reading on grade level. Without the reading recovery intervention, 80% of these 1,000 children would require special education services. This would be a total cost of $48 million for this one group of 800 students. Imagine this enormous cost repeated for each year that reading recovery is not funded in the budget. If it is expensive to teach a child how to read, it is more than 10 times as expensive not to teach that child to read. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Lou Robinson, Executive Director, PGCEA.
Madam Chair, members of the Board and Dr. Height, on behalf of the Prince George's County Educators Association and our 9,000 members, I want to thank the Superintendent and his team for having an open and transparent budget process that included all labor partners. Dr. Height shared with you his recommendations for managing the additional $85 million in cuts, and those recommendations will hit my members the hardest. In your own theory of action, the district proclaims that the most important interaction is between the teacher and the learner, and yet our members will once again continue to bear the burden of the cuts. In spite of the fiscal challenges, PGCEA believes that you cannot once again turn to employees to balance it on the backs of our members. As a district, we have lost more than 1,800 jobs, no steps and raises for two consecutive years, the loss of supplemental income from stipends and differentials, increased our class sizes, furloughs, and the reclassification of jobs. Enough is enough. If the organization is too large and reductions must be considered, no reduction should take place until you as a board have first examined and exhausted all alternatives available to you. Your decisions over the next couple of weeks could be devastating to the lives of our employees, erode the academic gains we made, and dismantle any hope we all have of pulling this district out of corrective action. The time to act is now. It cannot be business as usual. It's time to be courageous and take non-traditional actions on behalf of students and employees. If not, it may be time to tell the citizens and our parents that you cannot provide a quality education for their children based on the resources we receive. Since time is limited, let me provide you with just a few recommendations, many of which we've suggested in the past. First and foremost, let me make it clear that PGCEA opposes furloughs. Close or consolidate schools regardless of which community they're in. Stop transporting students beyond their neighborhood schools unless families pay a transportation fee. Increase the walking distance for students based on traffic patterns, pathways, and crime statistics. Close the district for no less than three weeks during the winter for an energy break. Choose academics over athletics. And suspend the athletic programs until funding returns. Suspend all evening and after-school activities. Shut our buildings down if you want to save money. Develop a retirement incentive plan with all the unions. Close all buildings to outside use. Establish a fee structure for services that we now provide for free or at a reduced rate. Well, since I just have a couple, Madam Chair will bear with me.
You may finish your sentence.
Thank you. Work with the unions on developing a four-day instructional week. 21 states have already done that and moved in that direction. Reexamine all our printing costs to include no paper payroll checks and no paper report cards. Strengthen the identification and screening of non-resident students. This has always been a problem. Eliminate all field trips. And given our steady loss of students for the last several years, develop new routing systems each year and check them again mid-year for efficiencies. Place all buildings, electrical demands on timers, and use capital funds to upgrade all buildings to provide more efficient, energy-saving lights. I want to thank you for your time and we will continue to work with you on this, but we have many other recommendations as well to provide to you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
Good evening and thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Height. My name is Jennifer Eldridge and my daughter Sophia attends kindergarten at Gladys Noon Spellman Elementary School in Chevrolet. As a parent whose child is in the county run before and after-school program, I'm here to talk to you about an alternate solution that would save the county a significant amount of money and do a better job serving our families. Springboard After-School is an innovative, nonprofit company that has recently entered a limited agreement to provide before and after-school care for 11 schools in the county. Tonight, I urge you to consider expanding this model to every school in the county. First, a word about the county run after-care staff. They are kind, hard-working, dedicated people, and they do a great job with limited resources. I appreciate very much that they provide a safe environment for my daughter while I'm still at work. However, I think that I speak for parents everywhere when I say that our children deserve so much more than just a safe place to be during those precious after-school hours. Our children deserve a robust program staffed by professional teachers that supports children in learning, gives ample time for recreation and exercise, and provides incredible enrichment opportunities. That is exactly what Springboard can offer. They partner with schools to reinforce the lessons being taught during the school day. And while I may need after-care for two to three hours every day, not every family does. Springboard gives parents the flexibility to pay only for the hours they need, making after-care a much more affordable and sensible option for a greater number of families. In addition, Springboard offers elective clubs. Imagine if our children had the opportunity to take fun and enriching in courses in Spanish, theater, hip-hop, or even robotics. I know that many parents who don't require full-time after-care would jump at the chance to enroll their child in a weekly after-school foreign language or instrumental music class. I cannot overemphasize how attractive these kinds of enrichment programs are to parents. This would be simple to do with Springboard. I am personally very frustrated that although it was our group of parents who identified Springboard and brought them to the attention of the county as an option for our neighborhood school, Spellman Elementary was not among the 11 schools selected. However, while we did get the after-care program from the county, there is great concern that our low enrollment numbers may not be able to support it in future years. One of the benefits of Springboard is that they can operate with a very low enrollment number. Given the current budget situation, there is no better time to consider replacing the county's before and after-school program with Springboard. By doing so, you could cut a significant item from the proposed 2012 budget and implement a program that better serves the children and families of Prince George's County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Eldridge.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Height, good evening. My name is Amy Olivo and I'm here on behalf of the organization that I helped to found three years ago, Chevrolet Advocates for Public Schools. As you make the very difficult but necessary budget cuts, I urge you to take a long, hard look at Cost Center 42434, Before and After School, listed under Curriculum and Instruction, Early Childhood Programs. Please consider the following points. One, the proposed budget for Before and After School for 2012 is more than $10.5 million. This program is supposed to be wholly self-supporting budget-wise, but it has been losing money consistently for the past several years. We are the only county in Maryland administering our own Before and After School program. Why? Not all PGCPs schools have this program because it will not be administered at a school with less than 40 to 50 children enrolled in the Before and After Care program. Parents' only option is to pay $3,000 to receive after-care every school day until 6:00 PM. It appears that PGCPs after-care has no curriculum, few standards, and no measurements for outcomes. I believe that PGCPs should cut this program entirely and put out RFPs for private organizations to provide after-care at our schools. I'd like to give you one example, and that's Springboard, which my colleague Jennifer Eldridge just spoke about. As she said, they're currently operating in four elementary schools and will be expanding to seven more through the RFP that they won last year. This is just one example, and I know that there are many other private organizations who would be interested in competing for an RFP. One, allowing Springboard After-School to operate will not cost the school system a dime, would result in net savings because we're currently losing money, and profit-sharing is possible. Parents will pay the same or less for this service because they pay for exactly what they need, not the one-size-fits-all program. Springboard hires only certified teachers. In many cases, they hire teachers who already work at that school. This is a way to supplement teacher salaries in very difficult budget times. Springboard is willing to start at a school with as few as 12 to 15 children enrolled. That's a contrast of our current program requiring 40 to 50 children to begin at a school. Springboard developed their curriculum based on the National Association of Elementary School Principal Recommendations. They conduct regular surveys of parents, students, teachers, and principals to see how it's going, and they're currently working with the National Institute of Out-of-School Time at Wellesley College to review their data. Springboard can offer enrichment to our students that we're not currently providing in elementary school, like foreign language, robots, robotics, taekwondo, band, et cetera. These are very, very difficult budget times, and I urge you to question why we are continuing a program that is losing money for our school system every year when there are options out there that don't cost us a dime while offering additional flexibility and cost savings to our parents as well as academic enrichments to our students. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pam. As I indicated earlier, when there are areas that we think might need clarification, particularly around the budget because we want you to be engaged, we'll defer to Dr. Height to do that. So Chair recognizes Dr. Height.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Ms. Olivo, for those comments. I do want to make a point of clarification that the Cost Center code 42434, Before and After School, it does have a proposed amount of 10.5, but on the following page, it has the revenues that are associated with that, and we collect the revenues, hence the program is self-sustaining. So it's not 10.5 out of the operating budget, it's 10.5 out of the individuals who participated in the program.
Thank you, Dr. Height. And there may need to be further clarification as we go on. I've gotten emails around that same topic.
Good evening, everyone. And I'm here to speak in favor of keeping evening high school. I'm a student, full-time student, at Northwestern Evening High School. And the reason why I think we should still have a traditional evening high school is because we need, well, me personally, I need a traditional setting due to personal obligations that require me to work during the day. And an online program will not be beneficial because I need an interaction with a teacher. If I have questions, I would like to get their feedback and get my questions answered. Through online, I wouldn't be able to have that experience. Although this is a time through a technology age, not everyone can afford to have daily access to a computer due to such hard economical time, which this means that some person will not be able to have computer access. And yes, there are public libraries that give access, however, there is no guarantee that you will have a seat, as well as those computers also have a certain limit to their time. So with that, this could possibly widen the learning gap between the affluent and economically Well-rounded, well, we need a well-rounded high school experience. And thanks to my principal, Mr. Kitchens, he has given that to us. He's given a great opportunity for us to have that traditional high school experience and those high school social events such as prom, graduation, and spirit week, which we all thank him for. So in conclusion, I believe strongly that we should keep evening high school. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Ms. Rosales.
Leon Smith, Porter Ridge Elementary School.
Good evening. My name is Leon Smith. I have a son, I'm sorry, I have a son that attends Porter Ridge Elementary School. Last year, while my son was in the first grade, he was having trouble academically. His teacher decided that it would be best to sign him up for the school's reading recovery program. My wife and I were kind of shocked because we were paying to put him into a private center for reading, but she told us that we would see a big difference in him in a short period of time. Before starting this program, it was like pulling teeth from getting him to pick up a book. But after meeting with the specialists for two weeks, he started to come home and grab books, eager to show us what he was learning and how his reading has improved. We began to see his grades improve, and he became more confident in his reading abilities. The reading recovery program provided him with that one-on-one teaching that he needed. They didn't force him to learn their way. They focused on his strengths and went from there. After about three weeks into the program, we pulled him out of the private center because he was making so much progress in the recovery program. My wife and I are fortunate enough to be able to send our children to private centers if needed. My child is no longer in the reading recovery program, so I'm not here to save the program, to save my family any money. I'm here because I'm a three-sport coach with the Prince George's County Boys and Girls Club that has coached kids that have benefited from this program whose parents cannot afford other alternatives. There are not too many programs or centers in this area that puts in the time and effort that these specialists do. This program works, and my son is proof of that. He's now in the second grade in reading at grade level. He's an honor roll student and has been selected Student of the Month this year. I was also told that as a parent, you shouldn't put a dollar amount on your children's education. I think that as a county school system, you shouldn't either. I can honestly say that this program has really made a difference in my son's life and abilities as a student, and he was devastated when he heard that this program might go away. My family asks that you please reconsider canceling the reading recovery program and bless another child with the opportunity to receive the same blessing that my son has. I'm pretty sure there's a lot of reading recovery specialists in here. Just a couple more things. My family would like to thank all the reading recovery specialists for all that they do. With the large classroom sizes within our school system, it is great to have a program available to provide that one-on-one attention that every child needs to succeed. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
Good evening. I am here to speak also in reference to the proposed budget cuts. I represent John Hanson Montessori. We meet again, everyone. In particular, I was concerned to hear about the cut in custodial positions. That directly affects my school being that the school was built in 1956 and the last improvement we saw was that in 1966. So to us custodians, a vital. Also, with some of the conditions of the building that you all are aware of, the road infestation, leaking pipes, leaking windows, buckets, water dripping in the classroom, the custodians play a vital role. I think with all the other issues that the teachers are dealing with, we're going to ask them also to dump the buckets of water out, we're going to ask them to pick up the rodents, we're going to ask them to clean the bathrooms. I think that's way beyond the scope of being an educator. Likewise, I think custodians play an equal vital role to the learning environment just as much as the teacher herself. Kids can't learn in a poor environment. Hygiene and cleanliness is critical to the overall success of the student. Also, when I think, and again, maybe I'm speaking from the angle of a social worker, but the lack of cleanliness in the schools also is connected. Then we have issues of public health. And being a parent of, I have small children, kindergartners. My son's class, they're just two, three years out from potty training. So we need custodians. I mean, it's vital. They barely have soap in the bathroom, so someone has to come in, provide toiletries. They need to wash their hands. And while the teacher's teaching that, we would like to have the facilities and have the necessary resources so they could actually do that. I think while I understand the economic issues and how it impacts systems at large and families as an individual, I can understand that. I think some things on the budget just need to be non-negotiables. I have to say, there has to be other things that we can cut or compromise on rather than teachers, reading recovery and custodians. I think some things just need to be non-negotiables. And I would ask that, while you all are administrators and policymakers that you think as parents, and for those who've never taught in the classroom, remember the classroom environment and the learning environment. It was critical to success. Because while data seems to be driving a lot of policies, you have to understand what's needed in the environment for the children to achieve, to get the scores and the data and the percentages that you are looking for. Because you can't keep cutting budgets and cutting things like reading recovery and then expect PG County School System to stand out before the other counties. And custodians and cleanliness and running water and rodents and all these work together. It's systemic. You can't, you can't, some things just need to be non-negotiable. Now, we can compromise maybe on other things, but not learning. We don't compromise on learning. And I say that as a parent, I say that as a social worker in PG County System as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Nicole Nelson. I am the PTSA President of John Hansen Montessori School. I am here to respectfully request that school-based employees be taken off the tables as the superintendent and the school board look for ways to cutting, cut spending. The foundation is critical for a sound structure, and for the Prince George's County School System, the school-based employees are the foundation. John Hansen Montessori personally felt the impact of cutting school-based employees this week. Our school suffered a loss of a four-year-old student. The needs of the family stretched beyond what administration could do. If we had a parent liaison in place, efforts could have been coordinated with the family and communicated with the parents to help meet the needs. To the Budget and Finance Office, our school-based employees may just be FTEs, but to us, they encompass so much more. They give hugs to children who may not get that love at home, so in that student's eyes, they're family. They are a shoulder to cry on when you need one, so in that student's eyes, they are a friend. They are someone to help you work through problems, so in that student's eyes, they are a social worker. Teachers, custodians, and school-based administration are the foundation. Student Board Member Mr. Harris recently asked how much more could be cut at the school-based level before it starts to impact the learning environment. Well, I recently spoke with a teacher from Stephen Decatur Middle School. He said there are more students than desk in his classroom. So that learning environment has been impacted. Another example, at Carrollton Elementary School, they had three third-grade classes that had about 20 students each. That is a manageable number, but because of the new classroom formula, the school had to condense the classes to only two, and the class size increased from 20 to 30. That learning environment has been impacted. Instead of chipping at the foundation, my suggestion is to streamline some of the administrative offices. Conduct an internal audit at administrative offices, such as Bonnie Johns. Whether it is reality or just perception, there is a belief that several people are on the school system roles accepting paychecks without doing anything to stabilize the foundation, but only make it weaker. In closing, please make decisions to strengthen the foundation and keep school-based employees intact. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Harriet Richmond?
Good evening, Dr. Height, members of the Board of Education. This is a desperate plea to reconsider the proposed cuts for the media specialists, athletic directors, creative and performing arts staffing, paraprofessionals in immersion programs, and moving pre-K to half-day in the custodian staff. As a parent of sons who are currently in the Montessori program at John Hansen, this would be a devastating blow to our program. Although our pre-K three students only attend half-day, which we've been trying to change over the years, our pre-K four needs to remain as full-time students. The young child has an exorbitant mind, which naturally incorporates experiences and the environment directly into his whole basic character and personality for life. This mental faculty, which is unique to young children, allows them to learn many concepts in an effortless, spontaneous manner. It also allows them to undergo the key phenomena of normalization to return to their true natural development. Almost 99% of our students can read with comprehension, may I add, by the end of pre-K four. By the time they enter first grade, they can read chapter books and more abstract materials for learning a broad range of advanced subject matter. As such, we need the media specialists to support this development. If cutting our athletic directors means cutting the people in charge of ensuring our students are physically fit, then does the word Michelle Obama mean anything? Decrease in obesity is a federal agenda, plus physical activity is an academic event. Where else would our children learn the fundamentals of sports as well as being a team player, a leader, and a strategic thinker? Our current athletic director provides those skills, which is again, a critical piece in Montessori learning. Creative and performing arts are another fundamental piece to our program. Mir Maria Montessori discovered that creat, creative and performing arts education greatly benefits children during their developmental years. Creative and performing arts enhances our children's problem-solving skills, physical coordination, poise, concentration, memory, visual and audible language skills, and self-discipline. It fosters self-confidence and improves our children's ability to learn. In the Montessori method, its lesson is experimental with, with interaction with children. Due to this type of learning, our teachers in the primary classes, which are ages three to six, would not survive without the help of our paraprofessionals. Last but not least, we need more custodial help, not less. As you heard, we're fighting a major rodent infestation, and we believe it's due to the shortage of custodial staff that we already were having problems with. So we can't afford to lose anyone else. But I wish you could just look at my face and just consider this. Do you really want to add to the unemployment rise already by letting all these people go?
Pamela Thomas?
Good evening to the Board of Education members, those of you in attendance in the audience, and to my fellow supportive library media specialists, friends, and colleagues. I had originally intended to speak this evening in support and praise of the Prince George's Library Media Programs in our schools, and with the news this week of possible deep cuts in the media specialist ranks, there seems to be an added urgency to speaking and to being heard. One of the first questions we would like to ask is what data was used to determine that cutting 90 positions from the library media program would benefit student achievement? We would also like to know where the 90 positions will be taken from and what levels will be affected. My name is Pamela Thomas, and I am currently the media specialist at Samuel Ogul Middle School. I'm in my 15th year in the county as a library media specialist, and I am representative of this group and other colleagues. My experience has been both in elementary schools and now in middle school. I discovered early on that we are expected to be all things to all people in our school settings. We are teachers, instructional partners, collaborators, and program administrators. But first and foremost, we are teachers. Certified teachers with advanced certificates, usually in more than one area, often master's degrees held. We are classified as teachers because we are teachers. We are observed and supervised as teachers, and we are part of the teachers' union. We must be certified with a master's degree. We have state standards, a state program, and a state-approved curriculum. In the elementary schools, our schedules are generally fixed where we are part of the rotation process to help provide students one of their creative arts classes, as well as helping give the teachers part of their planning period. This is when we teach. Research skills, information literacy skills, including the evaluation of sources and the love of reading. And because of fixed scheduling, we have to find ways to collaborate with individual teachers and teams at other times during the school day and week as to their needs, wants, and necessities for materials, resources, and assistance. In the middle school setting, we also work with individual students, whole classes, small groups, individual teachers, and teams to coordinate those precious resources, technology, equipment, and time to make sure that everyone has what is considered essential to support teaching and learning in any content area of the school. We manage and administer the many resources of our school libraries. If the affected schools each have a book collection of, say, 10,000 items, and the average value of each book is $25, then the value of those assets is approximately $250,000, $250,000. The loss of 90 library media specialists means that the Board of Education would lose control of more than $20 million in assets. We have the Maryland Library Media State Curriculum that is a vertical curriculum. We are certified to teach K to 12 skills that encompass the Maryland Library Media learning outcomes. They are also tied closely with the Maryland Technology Literacy Standards for Students. Thank you for your time this evening, from the library media specialist.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. As I call up the next person, I want to point out that there are some flyers in the back on the table, and we ask that you take one, copy it, and we want you to act on it. It gives you some instructions about calling a governor's office, and we want you to do that. Prince George's County is suffering a $20 million, is that correct? $20 million cut in this budget. We need help, and we need to do it together as a community. So we appreciate all your comments. There, the flyers are on the back table. We're asking you, every single person that is here tonight, to flood the governor's office tomorrow, tonight, with that information. Our next speaker is Adrienne Dykes.
Good evening, Dr. Height and members of the Board. My name is Adrienne Dykes. I'm a mother of a first-grade student at Barack Obama Elementary School. I'm here this evening to share with you my experiences and interaction with the students and staff at Barack Obama. When I heard that a new school would be opening in our neighborhood and would be named after the first African-American president, I couldn't have been more pleased or excited. I knew no cost would be spared in order to make this school second to none, and I can truly say that I am and I was impressed. The state-of-the-art computer lab, the smart boards in the classrooms, the teachers with laptops, I felt that Barack Obama was keeping up with the latest technology. The first week of school, I decided to, I was on vacation, and I decided to volunteer at the school. And I was displeased to learn that my son's teacher would be giving instructions to 28 students with no teacher's aide or assistant. I realized that the large class size would not be conducive to learning. With the large number of students in the class, not only was my son's teacher faced with the different level, learning levels of the children, but also their behavior. It appeared to me that the teacher had to stop instruction several times during the day in order to correct a child's behavior. I think with a smaller class size, teacher can exercise better class management. It's difficult to maintain a cooperative classroom when, classroom when class sizes are too large. A few months into the school year, the school was in need of paper. I didn't have a problem with providing my son's teacher with paper. In fact, I even came in and helped her with making copies of class assignments and homework. I just wondered if this was a result of wasteful copying or the lack of paper being supplied at the beginning of the school year. I just want you to know that this proposed budget is unacceptable. We cannot not allow our children to experience larger class sizes or be faced with a reduction in needed services and supplies. So before a final decision has been made to adopt a proposed budget, please keep in mind our county-wide motto, "Children come first."
Thank you, Ms. Dykes. Alicia Hayes. And as she comes forward, I just want to point out that there are some empty seats for those of you who are standing around if you wanted to take a seat. Ms. Hayes?
Good evening. My name is Alicia Hayes, and I'm the PTA President of Glass Manor Elementary School. I am in front of you tonight to talk about large class sizes. My child right now is in a class that has 36 students with only one teacher. The school has a class that has 38 students, and again, this is only with one teacher. My concern is what the effects of the budget cuts will have on this school as well as others. What would the new magic number be for too large of a student-teacher ratio? I'm also concerned with what the effects will have on the teachers, and most importantly, the test scores. This, this school has been AYP for six consecutive years. Will they be able to meet it again with this budget cut? The final point I would like to make is that by 2014, it is mandated to have 100% of students meeting or exceeding the proficient level in math and reading. How is that to be expected with this proposed budget cut and the ever-growing class sizes? Thank you.
Thank you. Francisco Celestino?
I'm speaking on behalf of Northwestern Evening High School. I believe that the night school funding should not be reduced or cut for the reasons that it will not only affect the night school graduates, but also day school graduates that need to gain an extra credit or more and can't obtain it from any other way but night school. Would you really like us to downgrade to a GED? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Rita Harper? Rita Harper?
Good evening. My topic is "Something is Fishy: Pleading to Retain Master Degree Librarian/Media Specialist at Our School at Wim Hall Academy." I also agree that none of these, these positions should be taken away. My media specialist has informational liter, literal, I'm terrible with Rs in S, so excuse me, literate skills, research skills, teach database skills. She's both a resource for students and staff. She have a dual role as a tag instructor. She's the best student in, interactive in communications I've seen as, with professional skills that I've seen displayed in this, in 40 years in Prince George County. We, we, the Title I, have school has not have a librarian for almost two years. Moreover, teachers are not highly qualified to teach research skills. Media specialists are trained to be inform, informations, have information skills. Our parents currently are not capable of taking their school's children to the library, so it's important that we keep these medias, media specialists here. Our children require high-caliber learning. In this area of the county, students are in need of much improving in reading. The lower grades to the higher grades have reading disabilities, minor functional but need improvement as well. They are missing, they are missing up their basic skills from early reading as phonics, vowels, et cetera. Mrs. White has all the skills that are required to help our children get, get started and involved for, for the 2014 Race to the Top. Ms., oh, I'm so sorry, I used a name. Sorry. Has displayed outstanding teaching skills that I have seen since, since in Prince George County media, teaching skills I've never seen in Prince George County media specialist. She believed that she, I believe that she could never, she believes that you never give up on children. She reverts to another method to reach the children. I myself continue to learn something from her daily. Let's please use this opportunity to let our students' needs outweigh budget needs. I would like to invite you, the Board, and Mr. Height to come to our school on a surprise visit and not, and do not be announced, to see how she operate in the school. I also would like, and don't throw nothing at me, anyone. I also would like to say, will you consider offering early retirement packages for tenured high-salary librarians to offset the costs? I also would like to say Prince George County is reverting education backwards versus current White House and United States Department of Education Race to the Top. You should go on the state line and, and view that. It is excellent, outstanding. They have a very broad range for us out here to get funds and grants to keep our kids going. Please do not lower our standards in school.
Thank you, Ms. Harper. Beverly Wells?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Height. My name is Beverly Wells. I'm a reading recovery teacher leader. I listened to the Board meeting on February 1st, and I'm concerned with some of the inaccuracies shared during that discussion about reading recovery. It is true that reading recovery was developed in New Zealand by Maori clay and has been in our system for 18 years. We do have some of the most highly-trained literacy experts in the system. 8% of our teachers are nationally board-certified. However, most teachers provide literacy instruction for between seven to nine students per day and between 14 and 20 students per year, which is the size of some first-grade classrooms. These same teachers act as a resource to classroom teachers, administrators, and special educators. They work with the most-at-risk population in the first grade. Our students are the most at risk, and we do not put off seeing these students until spring. We see low-achieving students, including special education students and ESOL students. 92% of our building principals indicated through a survey in the spring that that reading recovery reduced the number of students retained or referred for special education. We invite you to come to one of our one-hundred-and-thirteen elementary schools involved in reading recovery and observe a thirty-minute lesson. We are used as a response to intervention. We are mentioned in the What Works Clearinghouse, a branch of the United States Department of Education, as ranking number one in general reading achievement. Reading Recovery is still the only beginning reading program to receive high ratings across all four domains evaluated. The statement was made that there were other more cost-effective methods that could be used instead of reading recovery. But when we compared, compared with reading recovery, they do not have the same proven success rate. We are committed to the success of all children, and these cuts target the children who most need our help. Conservatively, to date, we have served over sixteen thousand students in this county. We are committed to seeking increased funding for Prince George's County schools. And we invite you, as I said before, to come to watch a lesson. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wells. Darryl Bullock. Darryl Bullock.
Good evening. On December twentieth in two thousand nine, many residents, including myself, spoke out against the redistricting. One of the reasons told to us that we were being redistrict was the overcrowding of schools. One of the many reasons I was against this was because of the added cost to the county for transportation. My child attended Perrywood Elementary, and we live less than two miles from this school. He was relocated to Barack Obama, which is more than six miles away. At that time, I pointed out the cost of maintenance, gas, time, effort, and other expenses due to transportation for the further distances. At that time, I felt like myself and other concerned parents were voicing our feelings upon deaf ears. I was not alone in feeling that the meeting was only a formality and that the decision was already made. Now, here we are once again discussing budget cuts due to overcrowding. In an email response from Dr. Height to me, he quoted, "While there was not universal support for the proposed boundaries, after much deliberation, the Board of Education did act on the proposed boundary changes." Now, here we are with a new proposal, which includes an overcrowding issue and cutting teaching staff. Nobody seems to ever explain why our children must always be the first to suffer. The President, in his State of the Union address, put education first, front and center on his national agenda. He spoke of education being our Sputnik moment. President Obama spoke of spending freezes in other areas except education. He spoke on investing and spending more as a part of the campaign to win the future. The President spoke of wanting to train and hire a hundred thousand new teachers in the area of sciences. Continually cutting the budget in our children's education, as the President said, is like lightning and overloaded plane by removing the engine. In other words, cutting teachers and continually slashing the budget of our children's education can make you feel good in the short term, but eventually, our children feel a massive impact. The President spoke of rewarding good teachers, and yet, here you are talking of cuts to teaching staff. Once again, the logical result has a domino effect of increasing class sizes. Is this why you spent all that money to build Barack Obama Elementary? Was the school a hasty decision, and now you feel the money could have been spent elsewhere? I preferred my child stayed closest to his home, but be that as it may, the redistricting was supposed to solve the overcrowding problem, yet here we go again. The attack is on to continue our race to the bottom, especially here in PG County. And we wonder why children in Montgomery County, Howard County, Fairfax seem to get better education and score higher as a whole. President Obama is passionate as I am when he talks about a race to the top as far as our children's education. So, when I hear about the school board and budget hearings, I keep thinking back to the redistricting, when the school board did what they wanted to do, regardless of what logical, practical, and what was best for our children. Now, let me ask, is this board hearing us now? Are you gonna do, just go through the formalities? Or are you gonna do whatever you want to do?
Thank you, Mr. Bullock. Teresa Weston. Teresa Weston. Teresa Weston.
Yes, good evening, Teresa Weston Saunders, President of PTA Council for Prince George's County. And hearing everything that the parents have said thus far, we already believe that they have spoken, they have stated what they feel, what they feel is needed for the children. And therefore, some of this I don't need to reiterate. I'll just say that we need to look at how we have allocated our funds, our positions, et cetera. We have ten thousand central office positions to eighty-eight hundred instructional positions. That number needs to be reversed. When GM measured its crisis situation, as we're measuring ours now, they didn't cut back on their workers because they realized their purpose was to sell cars. You cut back on the workers, you don't have any cars, okay? They cut back on their vice presidents, their directors, their chiefs, et cetera, before they got to anybody else. Our purpose is to educate and motivate our children to be ready to get out and be competitive in this world. Therefore, we need to make sure they have the instructional staff and the direct services to do so. Those indirect services are nice luxuries, but they have not impacted us being number twenty-two out of twenty-three in this state, okay? We have approximately at least seven-hundred-and-twenty-three people that are making over a hundred thousand dollars each. We should not be number twenty-two out of twenty-three, okay? Someone is not being effective or efficient as a manager. We ask you to also look at, of that seven-hundred-and-twenty-three people, how many are attending these hearings? Because if your CEO is at a hearing and listening to the clientele of what they need, I would think that most individuals in positions as directors, deputy directors, associate superintendents, chief, et cetera, et cetera, whatever those positions might be of the seven-twenty-three, would be interested and would also want to show not only their support for their boss, but also their commitment to the parents in this county. And as for the furloughs, most of the parents here have a job whereby they're furloughed five to ten days a year. So, the three to seven, or the five to seven of the central office, is not something that really we would feel apathy for because we understand those cost savings could go to direct services for our children's future because that's what we're here to do, educate them for the future. Our parents and grandparents made sure that their top priority was for us to be able to sit here today and for those seven-hundred-and-twenty-three people to make a hundred thousand dollars. We need to make sure we do that for our youth so that they can take over and be competitive and do the same. So, I applaud all the parents that came. I don't need to reiterate what they said. I believe you all have heard them. We need to focus on the prize and keep our eyes on that. It's our youth. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Saunders. Mimi Moraney. That concludes our public comment list for this evening. Do we have DeArthur Ames here?
Good evening. I, DeArthur Ames, am a student at Northwestern Evening High School, and I truly believe that by being Evening High School has gave me a very bigger opportunity to get my high school diploma. As we know, everyone cannot work well in a big environment and don't get along with others. I believe that keeping Evening High School is the best way to keep a safe environment, not only for me and others, but for everyone around us. I believe that Evening High School was a very big stepping with me. When I was in day school, I couldn't keep a grade point average of a C average. I now got my report card today, I have a three-point-seven-five. So, and then, but this class is being overcrowded. You know, teachers can't take time to really deliver to my student. You have to really sit there and take your time with some students because some don't learn as fast as others. And with night school, the classes are much smaller, you know, and teachers can work with you more better, and you can really sit there and pay attention because in day school, there are a lot of distractions. And, you know, you're in a big environment where you want to be with your friends and all that. But when you have another alternative way of learning, it's a big, a bigger way of really understanding what you need to know. And some people don't even have the chance to get their high school diploma. There are people that's thirty years old still trying to get their high school diploma. And it's some students that don't even want to have the chance to go to night school. Some of them just drop out and just have no life. So, I believe keeping Evening High School is a good way of having more, what's the word I'm looking for? Have a more accurate way of learning and keeping the violence out of the streets. Also, Evening High School have more graduates than day school. And then, the test scores are even higher. So, if you keep Evening High School, not only me, but me and my classmates will be very happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean Henson. Sean Henson.
Good evening. My name is Sean Henson. I'm here representing on behalf of Northwestern Evening High School. And I'm here to state the reason for not eliminating Evening High School. Evening High School provides avenues for those students who develop gaps in their education who now needs assistance in recuperating their education decisions and/or skills. Eliminating Evening High School altogether will take from students interacting with teachers, counselors, and administrators for future goal assistance as well of personal experience sharing future goals and aspirations to build heart-to-heart moments with staff members, let alone social skills with other classmates. It also takes away memories and moments that will last forever. Example, the feeling of walking across stage, enjoying the smiles of your family, let alone making your family proud and giving us a second chance at life.
Thank you, Mr. Henson. That concludes our public comment for tonight. We encourage you, obviously, to continue to come out to the Board of Education meetings and public sessions. The county council is having a budget meeting tonight. It may be over at this point, I'm not exactly sure, but if you feel like it, go on over there. Otherwise, we'll see you at the next meeting. The work sessions, I still encourage you to attend the work sessions as we deliberate through the process. Board chair recognizes Dr. Height.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I want to thank all of the parents and the students and the staff members who have come out this evening. This is very helpful as we go through this process. It is my intent, Madam Chair, to correct any information that is incorrect. And I do want to correct a statement that was made about the number of school-based staff. So, out of the eighteen thousand seventy-three employees, twelve thousand seven-hundred-and-sixteen of them are school-based. Five thousand three-hundred-and-fifty-seven are considered central administration, but that also includes transportation, nurses, and food service workers.
Thank you, Dr. Height, for that clarification. Tonight's meeting, well, you can view it on your channel ninety-six thirty-eight, and it's also webcast, so encourage your colleagues, yourself, if you want to review it as well. At this time, I believe that concludes the hearing. And nothing else, Dr. Height? Okay, thank you. We are adjourned at eight oh-five.